Act Order, Vice Chairman De Haven.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the Board of Supervisors come out of closed session and reconvene in open session.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that to best of each Board member's knowledge that only acquisition of real property pursuant to Section 2.2-371183 of the Code of Virginia in 1950 is amended, specifically discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the Board was discussed.
And we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. We will now convene our regular meeting. We have with us tonight the Pastor Ross Haver small from New Hope Alliance Church to deliver an invocation.
To you, O God, our Creator, known as I am, the God who is eternal, omniscient, omnipotent, patient, perfect, and therefore unchanging, you know our thoughts and our intentions. Tonight, as this Board conducts its business with the citizens of this community, may there be careful thought given to what is spoken, may the words be measured carefully, give to these decision-makers discernment, and may there be respect, that we may enjoy the peace that you offer and the life given to us that you sustain so graciously. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. Vice Chairman De Haven, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please, the flag, for the pledge, please. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Option of the agenda, Mr. Williams.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have items D, E, and F. D is the Parks and Recreation Commission report, E is the Public Works Committee report, and F is the Transportation Committee report for their meeting of April 27, 2015.
Questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda, D, E, and F items are approved. Next, our citizen comments. Did anyone sign up to speak to the Board?
We do, we have three, Mr. Chairman. The first is Ulysses Keriker.
If you'd please come forward, repeat your name, give your magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
We have an understanding that ladies always go first. My name is Dorothy Keriker. My home is at 110 Downing Circle, Stevens City, Opekwin District, and our property abuts the currently vacant piece of property referenced in the zoning request. My neighbors and I did not believe this Ailer Road rezoning request by CB Ventures to upgrade the current neighborhood business zoning to general business meets the current B2 zoning requirements. The applicant seeks to rezone 2.42 acres with relocated Ailer Road running through a considerable amount of it. I don't see it's possible to rezone the road, I don't know if it's possible, but when one considers a two to three lane relocation of Ailer Road, its parallel bike path, walkway, et cetera, we're talking about maybe an acre and three quarters. Under the zoning subparagraph, excuse me, I'm on oxygen, "The intent of this district is to provide a large area for a variety of businesses, office, and uses. The site does not appear by any definition to be large. What type of B2 business could be constructed?" The intent further states, "General business areas are located on arterial highways at major intersections and at interchange areas." To my knowledge, Ailer Road is not a major intersection. In fact, it isn't located at any intersection. The nearest intersection would be Fairfax Pike, located a quarter mile south. There are large commercial businesses on Fairfax Pike, but there are B1 zone properties between the proposed rezoning site and Fairfax Pike. In essence, should this application be granted, it would become a small oasis hemmed in with Ailer Road on the west, B1 properties on the north and south, and residential properties on the east. Is this the type of spot zoning Frederick County wants? We're concerned about the privacy and safety of our neighborhood as it relates to additional traffic, as well as transients or others around this property, especially at night. Ailer Road is heavily traveled by school bus routes, there are two schools along Ailer Road, one of which is only less than two blocks away from this proposed site. We're concerned about the safety of our neighborhood and other neighbors' children. In order to enter or exit the property in question, vehicles will have to drive over the walkway, bike path, where children will be walking, bike riding, skateboarding, or whatever else children do. The African states will be adequate parking available, which suggests a rather large parking lot. We all know children don't always watch for potential dangers. Adequate parking is this for his guests and his employees. At the Planning Commission meeting, the proposed application was unanimously rejected. His sincere request at this Board of Supervisors upholds the decision taken by the Planning Commission and also vetoed this rezoning request. Please leave our little neighborhood the way it is and don't have these large... Thank you.
Next.
I believe then we would have Mr. Ulysses Keriker.
You've always got the last word, yes, dear. I'm Ulysses Keriker, live on 110 Downing Circle in Stevens City, along with my wife, and we are concerned about the access to the property and also nuisance factors that could be avoided, and hardly think that a six-foot fence or anything of that sort with a few trees is going to just deviate any of this. Ailer Road is probably the highest point in that area, and if you build a building on top of that, you're going to be able to look into my bedroom windows, overlook my backyard, and that'll disturb my privacy for sure. The signage, how about signs? You don't order to get the sign big enough for somebody to see it from 81, it would have to be tremendously high. Restaurants, you've got, if he wants to put restaurants in, either in a hotel or by itself, you're concerned with rodents, rats, mice, bugs of some sort, odors will be permeating down in my yard. It's going to be a terrible situation, what a runoff, what a runoff that hill comes down into my crawl spaces it is. And last Monday, on May 12, I got a call from Mr. Montgomery wanting a meeting, and this, he had 60 days to come up with the facts that he's supposed to have. That was the 62nd day. The mere fact that he did not comply with the 60-day request broadcasts to me loud and clear that he wants to drop his present issue and go back to status quo. In closing, for the safety and the tranquility and the life establishment of this neighborhood, we ask that the Board do not allow rezoning to occur. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Alan Moak.
Good afternoon, my name is Alan Moak. I live at 111 Downing Circle, Stevens City, Virginia. I live across the street from the Kerikers. Unfortunately, there should be three more families here tonight, but they basically live in either work in DC or one is a state trooper on duty tonight, and he can't make it tonight either, so it's up to us to try and convince you of what we need for our community. Basically, one of the things I find is, from what VDOT has proposed with the realignment of the roadways, I'm concerned about the ability of any people coming off of 81 to find any operation on that defined site, because it's not going to be an easy direct-access route. Ailer Road is going to be cut off, that's the first thing. Second, we have a lot of children in our community, and I'm very worried about the fact of, if the people do find it, the increase of traffic is going to interfere with the kids going out playing after school, or even going to or coming from school, those that work or walk and don't get bused. Third, we do have the two schools on Ailer, the big one is Ailer Middle School, and that's only about a block or so away from this particular place, so that's another factor that we're very concerned about for the students there. Next is if they put in a facility that's, say, more than 30 feet in height, it's going to impact our total view looking westward from our whole neighborhood. That's going to very impact very drastically what we see and how we see the community. If it puts, if they put up what they had proposed as a hotel, that's going to bring in transient people, and there's a possibility of increased crime. I volunteer for the Sheriff's Department here in Frederick County, and in talking with deputies, I get told about this quite a bit, so that's something else I want to bring up. And there was something else I had, I wrote a note, and I can't remember what I want to say. But anyhow, I think that might be enough for me tonight, and I do hope that you will bear with us our concerns and hope you will vote in favor of us to deny the B2 petition. Thank you.
That it, Mr. Williams?
That it.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the special meeting, April 15, 2015.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve by Supervisor Fisher, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the special meeting, April 15, 2015, are approved. Next is the Budget Work Session, April 15, 2015.
Will they be approved as printed?
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the special meeting, April 15, 2015, are approved. Next is the Budget Work Session, April 15, 2015.
Will they be approved as printed?
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The Budget Work Session minutes of April 15, 2015, are approved. And finally, the regular meeting, April 22, 2015.
Boo for approval, as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, April 22, 2015, are approved. Next, our committee assignments. See, Historic Resources Advisory Board, Redbud, I believe you have a nomination?
I do, Chairman. I am nominating Dr. Robert Meadows for the Historic Resources Advisory Board.
All right, we have a nominee, you probably haven't seen the paperwork, but none of us gave Mr. Ranson enough guidance to know that he needed to help us with that. Would you like to see the paperwork, or would you like to... What we'd like to do is get the paperwork to the Board members before the meeting, and you handed it to me, and I didn't think fast enough to say we should have distributed it, so you can...
Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable with accepting...
That would be a good idea. So is that a second? You did make a motion, Mr. ...
Was there a motion? That would be a second, then, to...
We have a second, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and repeat the name for me.
Dr. Robert Meadows. He's already...
Dr. Robert Meadows.
Yeah, he was on the Extension Leadership Council, and he had a great interest to get on the Historic Council.
That's great, I'm glad you found someone. We have backed up Redbud pretty sufficiently for a new fellow, he's got to be struggling here with fine people. Parks and Recreation, Gainesboro, are we ready?
We are not ready, but I expect to have someone for next month, just did not have the paperwork available.
Historic Resources Advisory, Stonewall?
Not yet, sir.
Sanitation Authority, we have three openings on the Frederick County Sanitation Authority, and the Chairman would like to present for Board approval Gary Oats, Tom Simon, and Marcia Dilge, is that Dilge? As candidates to fill those three positions on the Sanitation Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Hess, a second by Supervisor De Haven, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then Gary Oats, Tom Simon, and Marcia Dilge are hereby appointed to the Frederick County Extension Leadership Council, Redbud? Not yet?
Dr. Robert Meadows says he wants, he would like another term, so I'm nominating him for that again.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Dr. Meadows is appointed to the Extension Leadership Council. Lord Fairfax Community College Board, we need someone. I doubt that we are ready this evening, but if the current Ms. Embry has done a good job, and hopefully we'll get a big thank you, and we'll look for a successor. Social Services Board, Opeka.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present the name of Gail Rush. Gail lives in my district and has been a teacher and principal, is interested in serving on this board, and I think she would do an excellent, excellent job.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Gail Rush is hereby appointed to Social Services Board. Next is the Development Impact Model Committee, and I guess we're still waiting. Is that correct, Mr. Williams?
I believe so.
All right. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. Do we have a resignation, a can't serve again, or a renomination?
Just have, first term is up, she is eligible to serve another term.
Do you know what you want to do?
I contacted her, she does desire to be reappointed, she has been a very active member of that committee, and I would move to recommend Lynn Schmidt to be reappointed to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee.
Here we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Lynn Schmidt is hereby appointed to, reappointed to the Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee. Next is a request for, from the Commissioner for Revenue Refunds. Mr. Williams, would you handle those?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think we have just one. This is a refund for Dominion Self-Storage. I've received the Commissioner's request dated March 12, 2015, to authorize a treasurer to refund Dominion Self-Storage the amount of $4,012.15 for business license taxes for 2012, 13, 14, and 15. This was the result of the taxpayer including rental and storage units as business license gross receipts. It's not subject to that taxation. The Commissioner verified the documentation details for this refund meet all requirements pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.13981A of the Code of Virginia. I note my consent as county attorney to the proposed action, and the Board will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move refund in the amount of $4,012.15 and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, whoop, excuse me, Supervisor Ranson.
Yay.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is our Transportation Committee meeting report from May 4, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Transportation Committee met on May 4, 15. The discussion item for action was the House Bill 2 Classification Discussion as a continuation from previous meetings as well as a carryover from an MPO meeting. Staff reviewed the glass, the draft classifications, the most recent Secretary of Transportation presentation, the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Staff noted that while VDOT currently has the county rated at a B classification of a scale of A to D, it was dependent on local VDOT partners and the staff within our MPO area that we should, we should be rated a C within our, and within the MPO area, and as a D within our rural areas. The prevailing belief is that this would make the county more competitive and give greater weight to items such as economic development and safety that were identified as our top priorities regionally early in the process. It was noted that many localities across the state are requesting adjustments, and that VDOT and the Commonwealth Transportation Board are listening. At the request of the committee, staff has since followed up with our regional commission to determine that their conversations with our CTB member would indicate his feelings on this, and he indicated that he is supportive of localities that request changes to their classifications. This would also put us on a level playing field with the other MPOs and the other localities within the Stanton District. So upon a motion to, and seconded, that we change our classification from a B, or request a change of our classification from a B for the entire county to a C for the MPO area, and a D for the rural areas, was passed unanimously, and I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion? Supervisor Lofton.
Question. Our funding that goes with each one of these categories, is that tiered? In other words, by moving ourselves down, do we move into a category that has less funding associated with it?
We don't know the answer to that question, but we know who we'd be competing with and how our scoring would be rated. And in the B category, and Mr. Bishop can, can address this further, there's a higher emphasis placed on congestion.
Right, I understand that.
Which, which isn't really a definition that fits in our community compared to those communities that have real congestion problems, and Mr. Bishop can address it further.
Yes, sir, the funding is not tied to the specific scoring tiers of A, B, C, and D. Under House Bill 1887, the funding is broken up into a number of categories. The first is state of good repair maintenance. The second is corridors of statewide importance, so 81, 66, some other roads that Franklin were trying to get on that list. Beyond that, it goes to the final category, which is an allocation to the districts. Now, that district is based off the old formulas, so Northern Virginia's probably still going to get more, Richmond's probably still going to get more, Hampton Roads is probably still going to get more. However, once Stanton District's allocation is determined, that's where these, these scoring categories come in. These are applied within those respective pots of money. So for corridors of statewide importance, we would be competing on a statewide basis. As we well know from our experience, that's tough sledding for us here in the valley. For the regional money, we would be only competing with other Stanton District, I'm sorry, for the district money, we would only be competing with other Stanton District localities. Now, in both those cases, these funding criteria, these scoring criteria are applied as they look at each of those projects to turn, determine which should be funded.
Do we have any projects that would move us out of the district funding level to another tiered portion of the funding that we'd be in competition with other larger localities, cities for?
We have projects that will likely be competing on both fronts, particularly the I-81 projects, interchange projects, and things of that sort. In those, in those examples, we would be competing not only for the corridors of statewide importance funds, and maybe, or maybe not successful, but those would also be competing within the district dollars.
So what we're trying to accomplish here would not impact our ability to compete for those funds outside the district level?
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Probably Supervisor De Haven's comments earlier that we don't know are as applicable as anything at this point, but it looks like best guess. Chamber tried to hold a transportation forum last week, and I think only 14 people signed up, so it was postponed. It is difficult to have answers, and most people don't know what the questions are right now. So anyway, if there's no other questions for Mr. Bishop, I'll ask you what your pleasure is, I recommend that you approve.
Made the motion, seconded.
Oh, it was motion made and seconded, we were in discussion, excuse me. I guess we're ready to vote. Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
I'm going to lose my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing on proposed ordinance salaries of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an ordinance required under state law to be adopted each year for establishing the salaries of the members of the Board of Supervisors, and it reads as follows. Be it ordained that the annual salary for each member of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015 shall be as follows: Chairman, $10,800; Vice Chairman, $10,200; and each other member of the Board of Supervisors at $9,000.
Questions? Mr. Williams, do you have any idea when it last changed?
I can speak for my time here, and it hasn't in my seven years, Mr. Tibbs.
2001.
2001.
2001.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we will conduct a public hearing on a proposed ordinance salary of the Board of Supervisors pursuant to Section 15.2-141.4.3 of the Code of Virginia in 1950 as amended. The Board of Supervisors will hold this public hearing to fix the annual salaries of the Board of Supervisors as follows: Chairman, $10,800; Vice Chairman, $10,200; and each other member of the Board of Supervisors at $9,000. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this proposed ordinance? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved for adoption of the ordinance.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells? All right, discussion? Well, as a, as a guy going out and has no, no dog in this fight, you need to look at an increase of these fees, and you should start by taking other counties that you feel akin to and see what they're paying. The last supervisor to make an issue of this was Supervisor Dove, and it seems like only people that are leaving have any heart for saying it. You don't want it to be too much, but it ought not to cost you to serve the county, and at these rates, it's close. So I would encourage you, another budget cycle, that you look at increasing these fees. That is my advice. Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess. Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a public hearing rezoning 01-15 Blackburn Commerce Center submitted by Stowe Engineering. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is a request to rezone 92.066 acres of a 128-acre parcel. The parcel is currently zoned RA, and it's to take it from that RA District to the M1 Light Industrial District. There are proffers associated with that, and that would, of course, accommodate industrial uses. The balance of the property, the 36.75 acres, will remain RA rural areas, and of course, this is within the Back Creek Magisterio District. Highlighted on the screen to your left is the property, and I'll just take a moment or two here to actually reaffirm where that property is. It's highlighted with a black boundary, and I'll just go around it here with a red marker. So this is the portion, the 128 acre portion of the Blackburn property. It is wholly on the inside of Route 37. Of course, it's bound by Apple Valley Road to the north. Across Apple Valley Road, you'll see some existing residential properties, Fellowship Bible Church, and beyond that is the Kernstown Battlefield. Just to the south of the property, you can see that there's existing M1 Light Industrial Land. That's part of the Coca-Cola Industrial Park, Business Park, and the Dawson Industrial Park that were rezoned within the past couple of decades. With that orientation, and let's move on to the industrial uses that are proposed here and recognizing that they're consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. When evaluating any rezoning, of course, we look at the impacts to the adjacent properties, and in particular, the transportation impacts, and I'll touch on those very, very briefly. With regards to the comprehensive plan, the property is full within the, the balance, if you will, the western balance of the southern Frederick Land Use Plan. And to zoom in here into that western portion, which covers everything west of I-81, of course, we pull into the property and recognize, again, its industrial land use designation, and of course, the fact that it is within the county's Sur and Water Service area boundary. It's important to look at the comprehensive plan also and recognize the road systems that have been identified as existing and to be improved, including an improved major collector of Shady Elm. Shady Elm goes to Apple Valley, out to Route 11 as an improved arterial. And then to the south of future Route 37, excuse me, of Route 37, we see Shady Elm as an improved major collector tying into Renaissance Drive, or Renaissance Drive, and that, of course, is part of an existing project that was a revenue-sharing project as it connects over to Route 11, the balance of which is proffered right away through the artillery project. So that's addressing the comprehensive plan. And for your, in case it's needed, just for points of illustration, we have an aerial photo here which shows the existing industrial development within that area. It also shows the existing road infrastructure for which this property will provide access, or will have access to. When we talk about the impacts associated with any request, the applicant has the ability through the proffer statement to address those impacts. And in this particular case, when looking at the proffer statement, we should recognize that all uses within the M1 District are allowed. There have been no restrictions placed upon those uses. To help guide that, the applicant has provided a generalized development plan, which is relatively basic, but hopefully that clearly shows where the industrial portion of the property is and where the balance of the rural area lies. In addition, it also helps identify a couple of the things that they've proffered, one of which, of course, is access. And access is proposed to be via two existing entrances. The first one, that is through an industrial property to Apple Valley, Apple Valley Drive, and the second one via Dawson Drive, again, the existing Dawson Industrial Park. With regards to the transportation impacts, it's important to recognize that this approach is different to some that may have occurred in the past, but it's consistent with a more recent one for BPG properties. The applicant has proffered up to $625,000 to assist in transportation improvements within this general vicinity. Now, that is based upon square footage construction that is anticipated with this industrial development. As you can see from the proffer statement, as the square footage increases, then the monetary contribution increases at a rate of .73 per square foot. So that gives you some idea of what may well be received with this project. I point that out in recognition that the transportation component of the comprehensive plan recognizes those improved major collector road networks. It recognizes improvements to Route 11. And as I mentioned, it also recognizes an improved major collector connection in the Renaissance Drive area south of 37. This application does not necessarily have the ability to directly implement those improvements. And so when the applicant and staff sit down, sat down at an earlier date, general consensus was achieved, if you will, about trying an alternative approach which could provide for money, funding, to actually have some of those transportation improvements come to fruition in that area. In addition, that money could be used to leverage additional state money to further enhance the ability to get those transportation improvements in place. And so I point that out and also recognize that the rezoning in the northeast land use plan area of BPG properties was rezoned by the board a couple of years ago, and it had the very same mechanism to address the transportation impacts. The applicant's generalized development plan is on the screen to your left, and of course, it, again, clearly identifies the area of M1 land use. But I'll also point out a couple of the other components, and that is the existing pond that is supposed to be preserved with the additional green buffer area along the northern portion of that, which is against the residential properties in the Kernstown Battlefield Association land. And of course, along that zoning boundary, there is an enhanced landscape buffer area which is also described in the proffers that proposes the preservation of the existing vegetation in that area, as it continues to grow to provide that buffer between the rural areas and the industrial areas. The applicant may touch on this here in a little while, but this is the site and with the existing wetlands that are run throughout the site identified. And I think you'll recognize that the development of the industrial land adjacent to the existing industrial land is, is a larger area of development, but the balance of the property, the balance of the industrial portion of the property contains a good number of wetlands. So continuing on the applicant's proffer statement, I mentioned some of the things with regards to how the site development could be tailored to mitigate some of the impacts. You'll notice in your agenda package that the applicant has worked closely with the Kernstown Battlefield Association, and they have an agreement in place. Part of that deals with a variety of common things that they have agreed to, but it's important also to recognize that the proffer statement has a height limitation, a height limitation of 60 feet. Now, that is for a distance from Apple Valley Road back 1,000 feet, and that is consistent with the adjacent Coca-Cola Business Center proffer that did the very same. And you may see some existing buildings out there that have, that have actually implemented that. So this application has proffered to do that, in addition to the landscape screening and the green space buffer that I had mentioned. One final proffer includes a contribution to Fine Rescue in the amount of $10,000 to address the impacts associated with that. The Planning Commission recently, following their public hearing, recommended approval of this particular request with one minor modification, and that was the time, the timing at which the monetary contribution would be received. And it was initially noted as at the time of certificate of occupancy. They modified that to recognize at the time of building permit, to give a little advanced ability to utilize that money. Of course, the proffer statement you have in your package reflects that, and it was highlighted, the signed proffers you have on your desk here this evening, and they were, of course, provided by the applicant and executed. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're seeking approval from the Board of Supervisors, or decision on this particular rezoning request. And ultimately, of course, like the Planning Commission's evaluation, the board should recognize or evaluate if the impacts associated with the request, in particular, the approach that is proposed with the transportation, the timing and the contribution is appropriate in this case. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Mr. Tim Stowe is here representing the applicant this evening, and the applicant is, is also here, Mr. Gray Volan, will be able to answer any questions that you may have, too.
Questions of staff?
Yes. I think I heard this correctly, that the papers that we received tonight only reflect the timing of the, the payment, the proffer payment.
That's correct.
It's the only change from what we had seen before.
That is the only change, and that is in your agenda, in your digital, digital agenda. We just wanted to make sure you saw the executed copy, too.
Okay.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Stowe, did you wish to make a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening. Let's just want to highlight a few points that we considered as we developed this rezoning application. And the first of those was when we met with staff, they recommended that this may be a model project for the business-friendly approach. That's why you see both the rezoning application and the master development plan in your packet this evening, because they've worked closely with us, and we would say from a schedule standpoint, that approach has worked. As we look at the site, and as we consider the limitations that we have on the site with the wetlands here, it greatly constrains how this property can be developed without impacting wetlands and going through a federal permitting process associated with those wetlands. As we considered this and looked at those areas, it pushed a lot of that development to the south that, that we were wanting to accomplish. That was our first consideration. Our second consideration was how might this project impact neighbors? Because we know there's people that live directly across the street on Apple Valley Road. We see the houses, and I lived in that district for some time and drove that road. Understand those people have, have a interest in this project. So we implemented some of the things Mr. Ruddy just described, with the buffers around the pond, the buffer line along the M1 zoning, where those areas would be protected. We put in screening around loading docks so that neighbors wouldn't have to look at trucks, and we limited the building heights, as Mr. Ruddy just, just indicated. We didn't get very far into our transportation, traffic impact analysis before we realized that there's some transportation challenges in this area as well. We also realized that we didn't own the property where these challenges occur, where a lot of these congestions occur, and the projects that need to be implemented to relieve the congestion are big projects. So we went back to staff and asked how we might address this, what would be an appropriate action, and staff, through multiple meetings, we came to the conclusion that a regional approach with a cash contribution towards transportation improvements that could be leveraged with other funds would be the best approach in this particular case. The BPG rezoning was held up as an example, which is probably a good example. That's a project that also had a transportation impact off-site at an area north of Winchester where we have a lot of congestion. We looked at that. We looked at the project VDOT currently has underway at the end of Route 37 with the interchange improvements there, and we felt like this was a good approach that would solve the problem and pursued that, and that's what's reflected in your proffers this evening. We also wanted to limit the entrances to the property. As we've proffered, there'll be two, the existing entrance on Apple Valley Road, and then the extension of Dawson Drive to the project as well. We also proffered to use interpartial connections so that there would be an internal, interpartial connector ability there to prevent the need, or at least limit the need for future entrances. Should anyone ever think those are needed, we'd be able to congregate those, accommodate those on-site. And last, but certainly not least, those of you who know my background here, we went and talked to the Kernstown Battlefield Association and talked to them about what the impacts of a project of this nature might be on their properties. And we agreed, and you have a copy of the written agreement in your, in your packet there, but some of the highlights of what we agreed to is we agreed to minimize reflective glass in buildings so it wouldn't obstruct their view over on Pritchard's Hill. We agreed to mix up the landscaping so that the deciduous trees are concentrated on the south end, which is what would have occurred in the 1860s, and the evergreens would be on the north end. We agreed to construct a bus pull-off, and that was shown on our, that's actually off of the rezoning area, but we agreed to build it. That's on Lot 4 of the Coca-Cola subdivision there. And this gives the visitors a Confederate perspective of the battlefield that they have not had a chance to show previously. And then we also agreed to allow their team, their in-house team, to perform relic hunting on the property prior to construction beginning, and to display those relics, anything that they find on, in their museum there, on their property. With those highlights, I would just summarize by saying, our goal is to follow the business-friendly approach with this, and we feel like certainly staff has worked closely with us to accomplish that, and that that process works. We think there's benefits here for the county in the form of jobs and industrial base, certainly in tax revenue, and I request your favorable consideration of this request. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Mr. Stowe?
If I'm traveling down Apple Valley Road, hitting, hitting towards Middle Road, and if I look off the left, is that where this proposed structure is going to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And right now, that's just a big vacant field?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how far off of Apple Valley Road is that proposed structure going to lie?
There are, well, with this, we'll be able to, we're planning multiple structures there that'll be different sizes, and it, and it all goes back to what we can do within the confines and the, and the natural barriers that exist on the site. So we're anticipating that there will probably be one adjacent to the existing warehouse that you see, not the lighter colored square one, but the more rectangular one. We're anticipating one that would be parallel there. These will be governed by the county's setback requirements and also the, the proffers that, that dictate how far we need to be from the road with, with the various buffers.
That existing warehouse you mentioned, which one is that? Ford Warehouse?
That's the one, I believe Mercury Paper is using that, is using that warehouse at present. It's the longer rectangular one there on the photo.
And the one structure will be adjacent to Mercury Paper?
Yes.
And none of your structures are going to be above 60 feet high?
If it's within 1,000 feet of Apple Valley Road, it'll be 60 feet high at the max.
You can go higher as, if you go farther off of Apple Valley Road?
There are provisions in the zoning ordinance that would allow ancillary structures to go taller within, within the zoning, and once we get 1,000, more than 1,000 feet from Apple Valley Road, you're getting closer. There's a big power line out there. There's several things out there that are, that are tall, about 100 feet tall. So we're getting closer to those, and we wanted to stay away from tall buildings and tall ancillary structures within that view shed of the residents that live along Apple Valley Road. So we pushed all that back, is what we've done.
Anyone else? Help me with the last slide and this slide, it's a curiosity question. Exactly where is the pull-off in the, to look at, across the road? Orientate me with this picture. I see.
I don't know how to point with this device, sir, but.
Route 37 there?
Apple Valley Road is across the top of the photo here.
Oh, okay. So, and where exactly is the pullover?
It would be the dark black line here, and right under the double P there in Apple Valley Road is the existing entrance off of Apple Valley Road that goes into the existing warehouse there.
It's still not clear to me where the bus pulls off. Maybe you have to go to the other map.
Okay, we'll, we'll use this one. And see in that location, right adjacent to the 331 of Apple Valley, that is the existing driveway that serves the Coca-Cola Business Center, Business Park. It's the existing driveway that Mercury Paper trucks use. And so it is right on, and adjacent to that driveway, if you will, that the applicant is working with the KBA to put the pull-off on, and you'll see that on the MDP.
And then go horizontal to the, to the road, and then back around and go back out? I mean, what, what exactly is it?
That, that's actually a loop, and I don't know if you can see all of the loop in here, but the road actually loops around. You can see back over at the V on the right-hand side of the screen how the road loops around.
Exists, right?
Yes, sir. That exists.
Adding?
The only thing we're adding is a small pull-off that would be to the left of the number three up in there.
Okay.
That's it.
It was unclear to me, and I appreciate you.
For me, that is almost directly across from the frontage that the battlefield has along Apple Valley Road. Is that correct?
That's correct. It gives them, it gives them a vantage point of view from there to Pritchard's Hill that the likes of Stonewall Jackson had and others had, and most people haven't had a chance to enjoy that view.
Right.
It's not an option for folks today.
No, sir, it is not, because it's private property.
Any other questions for Mr. Stowe? Did the owner want to say anything? Staff identified them, but.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we're ready to go to public hearing. This is a rezoning request, 01-15 Blackburn Commerce Center submitted by Stowe Engineering P L C to rezone 128.56 plus or minus acres as follows. 92.066 plus or minus acres from R8 Rural Area District to M1 Light Industrial District, and 36.754 plus or minus acres are to remain R8 Rural Areas with proffers. The property is located adjacent to Dawson Drive, Apple Valley Road, and Route 37, and is identified by project identification number 63-A-801 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this rezoning request? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please. Anyone?
Hi, my name is Alan Moak at 111 Downing Circle, Stevens City. I just have a question or comment on this. I think that it's a good idea to do this, but I would be concerned about the overall traffic improvements and how, because I think this street goes out and joins Route 11, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Route 11 is not really a truck-traffic route. I'm just wondering, how is that going to impact the whole area, and how are we going to wind up paying for widening that facility such that everybody is equally taking care of both the truckers and the regular population that really goes down that area? I don't use 11 that much, but when I do, I just don't like getting involved with 18-wheelers, per se. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one close the public hearing, would the applicant care to address the concerns expressed?
Sir, I would add that I agree that sometimes traveling with tractor-trailers is tricky business. In this case, what we've attempted to do is follow the county's comprehensive plan that's been adopted by this body, and to make a contribution that we felt like was proportionate to the impact that we're going to have to the transportation improvements from a regional standpoint, rather than spot improvements that only help us accomplish this. And we feel like this is a much better approach for the county overall.
Any other closing comments?
Thank you for consideration of this request. We request your favorable take.
Okay. Any questions on behalf of the board before we call for motion?
Supervisor Lofton?
A comment, if I may, to answer your gentleman's question. Actually, Route 11 is a truck route. You'll find that tractors and trailers from Trex, the Battle Drive area, Hood, there's a lot of industry out there that actually uses. I use that road quite a bit, and there is quite a bit of truck traffic already there. I have not seen it, we'll say, I've not seen it congested to the point that I would not use it yet. And I think that the proffers are making, to mitigate some of that congestion, that they will be introducing into that mix is a good remedy, for the short term at least. Yeah.
Sir, we've held the public hearing, but if you want to, I'll let you go back up to the podium, but you'll have to come by the podium.
I'd be happy to answer these questions you might have if
We really have conducted the public hearing already and closed it.
Yeah.
But I'll grant you the
Oh, thank you.
... opportunity to speak.
Well, it's
Don't get me in trouble.
I've only been here 20-plus years, and I'm, the rapid growth that we've had in this community is astounding. From my point of view, I come from northern Jersey, which was basically macadam and concrete, okay? And I loved the rural atmosphere down here when we moved here. And I'm getting concerned that we're losing the ruralness, unfortunately, but we do need growth, and I'm hoping that in moderation. We need the tax revenues, and I like the idea of the proposed usage of this land for the industrial base. But again, my concern is Route 11, it's been widened up to a certain point, and you do have some trucks there. But it's not like, you know, we have a couple of trucks that go down 277 in Stevens City, but the concern I have, though, even over there, is the fact that VDOT is trying to make that into a superhighway over to the inland port. And I don't think that's appropriate for that area, just like I don't think, we got to be careful. I guess my concern would be, from that map, what would it take to make a junction onto 37 and actually have those trucks immediately get onto 37 instead of going through on Route 11?
Would you be willing to let Mr. Lofton meet with you
Sure.
After the meeting and perhaps answer some of your questions and/or come up with questions that don't have answers?
Okay.
And then I won't get any more trouble with having reopened a public hearing?
Okay. I'm sorry, it's just
I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Any other questions on behalf of the board or discussion? Then Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Back Creek. I think that the developer and staff have worked very well together to look at how best to develop this site. I particularly like the fact that there are internal roadways, private roadways, that do not have access, any more access, as to Apple Valley Road. The accesses to Apple Valley Road now occur east of the 18 houses that front Apple Valley Road, which I think they will see little impact as far as they're concerned in their neighborhood. I do like, if you look at the existing structures now, they're well screened by the buffers and the vegetation there, and I think this will just continue that particular scenario. And I think this would be a positive revenue to the county. And so I would move to approve the rezoning number 01-15, the Blackburn Commerce Center.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second to that?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing non, Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. The rezoning is approved. Next is another public hearing on an ordinance amendment to Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning Article 5, planned development districts. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a minor revision to the zoning ordinance to include the OM District, which is the Office Manufacturing Park District, to the permitted uses in the R4 District, which is the residential planned community district. Currently, the R4 allows for RP, which is your residential, as well as B1, B2, B3, which are your commercial districts, and M1, an industrial district, all in the permitted use list. As with the R4, any uses that are proposed within the district have to be shown at the rezoning stage, as well as the master plan stage. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this at their April 15 meeting. They did recommend approval, so tonight we're seeking a decision from the board on this proposed amendment. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. We'll now conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 5, Planned Development Districts, Part 501-R4, Residential Plan Community District. Section 165-501.03, permitted uses. Revisions to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to include the OM Office Manufacturing Park District to the permitted uses in the R4 District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one close the public hearing, it's a pleasure to the board.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fisher to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing non, Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. The ordinance amendment is approved. Next is another ordinance amendment for public hearing to change Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 2, supplementary use regulations, parking buffers, and regulations for specific uses. Go ahead.
Again, thank you. This is an ordinance revision to allow the use of permeable paving systems for the construction of parking areas within all zoning districts. Now, this request is really due to the new stormwater regulations and the need for additional options dealing with onsite stormwater. Currently, the ordinance only allows for their use within overflow parking areas. So what this revision proposes to do is to move the permeable paving option from the overflow into the permitted surfaces for all parking areas. The ordinance gives the zoning administrator the ability to approve this alternative surface when they are implementing LID or low-impact development. Also in there is a requirement that the Director of Public Works must also approve the alternative surface. So again, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this on their April 15 meeting. They did recommend approval, so tonight we're seeking a decision from the board on the proposed amendment. Again, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. We will now hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 2, supplementary use regulations, parking buffers, and regulations for specific uses. Part 202, Off-Street Parking, Loading and Access, Section 165-202.0-1, Off-Street Parking, Parking Lots. Revisions to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to include the use of permeable paving systems for parking lots. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one close the public hearing, it's a pleasure to the board.
Chairman, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve, and a second by Supervisor Lofton. Supervisor Ranson.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a postponed from March 11, rezoning 0514 CB Ventures. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for purposes of refamiliarizing yourselves with the request. The 2.42 acres is down in the Peck and Magisterial District and is identified on the screen to your left. You can see it adjacent to Ayla Road. And when we move forward here and recognize the properties, this is the B1 zoning that's identified on the properties, adjacent to the existing residential neighborhood that we discussed before, to the east. And just to the south, of course, is the B2 Commercial, adjacent to 277 Fairfax Pike. This request, as you know, has a generalized development plan that's associated with it. That generalized development plan basically picks up the future realignment of Ayla Road across this property and recognizes the future dedication of that. When this was discussed at the Planning Commission, they ultimately recommended denial, of course, and they expressed about their concerns about the neighborhood character being adversely impacted by the rezoning of this property and the intensity of the B2 uses adjacent to the, adjacent residential uses being negatively impacted. Similar concerns were expressed during the Board of Supervisors, and a fair amount of discussion occurred at that meeting back in March. So ultimately, of course, the board tabled that for 60 days to give the applicant the ability to meet with the neighbors and, if appropriate, to adjust their request further. What you do have is, part of your agenda tonight is the proffer statement that has the one modification that was made, that was submitted, and an executed copy of the proffers is on your desk that was submitted last Wednesday, in time for the agenda to go out. The paper copy of the agenda has, of course, the correct proffer statement in. The digital version has an older file that was inserted, so I just wanted to clarify that the applicant did make one amendment to the proffer statement, and that deals with the maximum building height. And it states that all buildings, albeit two uses, shall be 35 feet in height. This was previously 50 feet in height, as proffered. So again, recognize that the change that the applicant provided and recognize that the proffer statement was provided and appropriately executed for that one change. Ultimately, this evening, we're seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on this rezoning request. I do want to recognize that, in addition to the generalized development plan, the applicant provided, I hit last evening, and I made a copy for you of a variety of different elevations. There were a couple of, a cover letter, if you will, from Mr. Ben Montgomery, who will have the opportunity to get up and speak in a moment, representing this request. But as soon as it came, I wanted to make sure you had a copy of that memorandum, in addition to the three-site plan exhibits that were provided. And of course, I'll, again, let Mr. Montgomery talk about those, but the first one being an existing B1 neighborhood, if you will, an existing office building. The second exhibit depicting a hotel on the site. The third exhibit being a comparison, if you will, elevation cross-section of a proposed office and a proposed hotel in relationship to the property line buffer and existing residential uses. And the final one being an exhibit of a hotel that would be enabled should the B2 rezoning occur on that property and still meet the height limitations that the revised proffer of 35 feet would enable. So I point that out, of course, that is one of the biggest concerns that was discussed before, and we recognized that the increase in intensity from the B1 to B2 allows drive-through operations, some car lots, fast food restaurants, and hotels, which translates to more vehicle trips. And the B2 over the B1 district allows for a greater height limitation, 60 feet. But we must recognize the applicant did proffer to reduce that to 50 feet before, and this final proffer statement has dropped to 35 feet for all B2 users. But also, the floor area ratio, the FAR, the development ability on the site, from a B1 of 0.3 goes up to a 1.0 floor area ratio, more intensive development. Again, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board of Supervisors may have, and recognize that Mr. Ben Montgomery is here representing the application this evening.
Questions, staff?
A question I have, VDOT, when I was reading in there, I didn't see a significant no for the transportation situation, where they said it's absolutely unobtainable. Am I correct there?
You're correct. The generalized development plan clearly identifies the improvements that are anticipated with the preliminary plans that VDOT have been working on. So I think it's safe to say that the dedication is correct, so VDOT's happy with that. The way they depicted the future road, as far as the entrances to it, is correct, so, you know, VDOT would have a positive comment reflective of that.
Epic flow in that situation.
Yes, sir.
Office remote hill.
Other questions for staff?
Supervisor Hess? I'm clear on the height. They're proffering a 35-foot height limitation, and what's the current maximum under the B1?
The B1 district allows 35 feet. That is the maximum for the B1 district. Now, their request is to go to B2.
Right.
The B2 would allow structures for office buildings and hotels and motels to go up to 60 feet in height.
Right.
And we see examples of that on Route 50. What the applicant proffered was a reduction from 60 feet to 50 feet with the time of the last public hearing. They have subsequently changed that even further to drop it to 35 feet.
Which is the same as the current B1.
That's correct.
Supervisor Fisher?
Uh, Mr. Ruddy, if I'm trying to look at the elevations, if 35 feet is the proffer, then this hotel building's not going to be allowed. It looks to me, the print's so fine on here, the old eyes can't read it, but it looks like the height of that apex is at 40 feet.
Well, obviously, this application has been in front of the Planning Commission and Board for a while now.
This is just kind of, this particular building would not be allowed.
That particular building most likely would be allowed, and the reason
At 40 feet, when it's proffered to 35? I'm just
Now, the exhibits that were provided yesterday, that you have in front of you, are not proffered. They're illustrative of what the applicant would like to do. I've had a brief look at them, and looking at what is, I think, depicted on there, it shows something that would work. The height is 35 feet at the bottom of the roof, 45 feet at the top, but they would take the average, and that is, you know, so, excuse me, 30 feet, the average would be okay. Again, that was my look, evaluation of what we got today. I would suggest that the applicant address exactly what he's provided and the details within that. Again, it's not proffered, it's an exhibit illustrating what they may want to do, so maybe a good chance.
It appears to me, the way it's written, that that building would not be allowed if its apex is at 40 feet. It clearly says 35 is the height. You know, I don't know how you average gables, because you could get out of all kinds of different slopes of roof systems and move that thing around all over. different slopes of roof systems and move that thing around all over the place.
And obviously, we would make sure that it met the standards of the zoning ordinance without height limitation and where the average and the peak would be. It does look like quite a large building, but again, that's something that's provided by the applicant, so I think it would be safe to ask them questions and details about that detail.
Other questions for staff? Thank you, sir. I think, Mr. Montgomery, we have some for you. Perhaps you could start with Mr. ... Well, did you have anything you wanted to say that you needed to get to Mr. Fisher's concerns?
The, well, it really starts out where I wanted to start out, anyway. Mike, does this get me to that first site plan? Yeah, okay. The 35 feet will be 35 feet max as defined by the zoning ordinance. So we will not go above that point, and it'll be per the zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance would, has different specifications based on slope roofs, based on flat roofs, et cetera. So it will be based on the zoning ordinance.
So the apex would be 35 feet?
No. The apex would be above 35 feet on a sloped roof. That's per zoning ordinance.
I just wanted everybody to understand that.
Yes, sir.
Because the way the ordinance is written, 35 feet's not 35 feet, if you get my drift.
And it's not 35 feet in Zone 1 either?
Right, I understand.
B1, it'd be the same, exactly. Okay. All right. So that being said, I mean, we're looking at, based on our proffer statement, we're taking this back to 35 feet, which is exactly what B1 has. It's the maximum height allowed in B1. It would be the maximum-sized building allowed in B1. And so when you look at this site plan that I've got up here, this is an office building showing a rather large parking lot. This would meet Zone B1 approval. I could build this now. All I would need would be staff approval in the site plan process. Would have no public hearing, would have no issues with the Board. And so what we're looking at is we have a B1 use that is allowed, and we've got, you know, as we talk, as the neighbors have spoken, their objections. Is there impact to their properties? Certainly. There's definitely impact to their residential properties. There's impact if we go B1. There's impact if we go B2. And, you know, no matter what we do to this property, there's going to be impact to these residences behind them. So if we build an office building on B1, then we're going to impact these properties. We're going to have a parking lot that kids are going to want to play in. We're going to have a parking lot that, you know, skateboarders are going to want to be at. And so, you know, it's up to the parents of the neighborhoods to help with this situation. It's up to the property managers to help with that situation. It may come down to the police to help with that situation. But it's like any other property, you're going to have those issues. You've got sidewalks that are running down the street. The, this property, again, B1 use, the major use that probably would fall in this area would be a medical office building. If this went medical office building, the traffic flow from this building, which is allowed, would actually be greater than a hotel by 60%. And so, you know, when you look at traffic, the allowed uses have great impact on this area, as well as the B2 uses. We're just asking for consideration to go from B1 to B2. The, you know, the other objections that I've heard with stormwater management from previous meetings, this facility has a large impervious area. I appreciate the new amendment to go to have some impervious areas, because that's needed for the new BMPs. But this area would have to have proper stormwater management. It would have to have proper BMPs involved in the project so that we take care of water quality as well. And we have the pond shown at the lower portion of the property, which is the lowest spot in the property, and that's where the water would be funneled to. If anything, the water would be, this would be an improvement to the property owners behind the property. They would have less stormwater issues in the future than they do right now. And so as we look at the objections, you know, we have to consider that this property is going to be developed. The reality is, these landowners are within a few hundred feet of I-81, one of the busiest interstates in the country. And, you know, when you're facing I-81, your property's going to be developed. It's a very valuable piece of property, and it needs to be developed. And the uses that best fit fall in B2, and that's why we're trying to go that direction. If you look at the site plan for the hotel, it's very similar. We've got a similar situation, and we picked hotel not because that's set in stone, that that's the direction that the landowners planning to go, but it's a situation to where this was the biggest objection that we've heard from the neighbors. So we wanted to show a hotel. We wanted to show you some elevations, wanted to show you some better depictions so that you would get a feel for what it would look like if we went that direction. And with a hotel, we have the same situations. We've got the large parking area. We've got the traffic situation. But as I would like to repeat, traffic for this would be less than if it was a medical office building. And so when you look at the different circumstances, the impact that this facility would have versus an office building is no different. Are there impacts? Yes, there are impacts. I'm sure each one of these neighbors would tell you, they don't want an office building built on this property. But the reality is, the property needs to be developed. When we look at the elevation, or look at, well, the elevation is what I'd like to look at next. You're correct. You know, when we look at exact zoning ordinance, it's the average of a sloped roof. That's what zoning ordinance requires. So the peak would be slightly higher. But that same zoning ordinance applies to any building built in B1. So that peak would apply in B1 as well. So it's no different. There's no difference in impact when we proffer down to the 35 feet. When you go back to the profiles, the profile on the top is an office building. The profile on the bottom is the hotel. The office building is actually, would be placed closer to the back property line because our office buildings want to face the street. You want to have the maximum amount of space facing the street. And so parking would all be in the front. We don't only have a drive alley for deliveries in the back of the building. A hotel, on the other hand, they want parking all the way around. So you actually have more space pushed out away from the property lines with a hotel than you would with an office building. So the impacts change from that respect. Hotels also tend to have a residential look instead of a commercial, you know, boxy look. And so, you know, to me, the aesthetics of a hotel is more pleasing to have a residential style hotel than to have a box office building. And so the impact from that standpoint, to me, is a better situation. I wanted to give you all some renderings.
Thank you.
When you look at the aesthetics of the rendering, things jump out. And you know it, as you travel around the country. You know that hotels tend to have much better landscaping.
They tend to have better, well-kept areas, the nicer hotels, or the ones that, the main street hotels. And so, you know, the aesthetics of a hotel is equal, if not better, than anything else that you could have. And so when we look at the impacts, when we look at the differences between B1 and B2 for this neighborhood, the impacts are no different now that we've changed the height. I mean, we've gone through this process. We didn't want to have the height at 35 feet. We wanted to have a larger building. We wanted to be able to put more rooms on this space. But we're able to work the economics and get it down to 35 feet and make it work. And so that's why we've proffered to this point. I think it's an advantage. It's definitely, to me, it's an advantage to the county to go this direction. When you look at the, what you have to do, if you left it B1, when this road gets put in, you have to purchase the property. We're proffering the property for the right-of-way for the new road. You would have to purchase it. So that's money coming out of the county. If we went to B2, we're proffering this amount of property that's given to the county. You've got the tax base that would come to the county. In particular, if it's a hotel, you'd be looking at, you know, in the range of $30,000 in property taxes, and you'd be looking in the range of another $30,000 a year in use taxes, room use taxes. And so this is a revenue stream to the county that isn't there right now, that wouldn't be there if we don't go to this change in zoning. And the other thing is jobs. I mean, you do pick up jobs when you have this facility. And so seven jobs would be created with a hotel, and it's a win for the county. And when you face your constituents, I think you need to realize that it's a win for the county, and voting against it is not a win for the county. Are there any questions?
Questions?
I do. The rendering that I'm looking at.
Yes, sir.
Of the hotel. Back several sentences ago, I'm looking at a hotel, I'm looking at a building, and I know B1, you can build the building.
Yes, sir.
Right now.
Right now.
Today. The hotel is not permitted in B1, so...
That's correct.
That would be the B2.
Correct.
So I'm looking at building, I'm looking at hotel, but then you said this may not be the direction that the owner of the land wants to take.
It's not set in stone that the owner is going to build a hotel.
So...
But we know, we know for this property that this might be a very good use for it, and so that's, it's a likelihood that it could happen.
My question being, B1 allows certain things, B2 allows certain things...
Correct.
Other than hotels.
Correct.
And I'm sensitive to those other things.
Yes, sir.
I see your two renderings, and I understand the comparison.
Right.
If I take comparison to a fast food restaurant.
Yes, sir.
That's in B2.
I understood.
That's not B1.
I understood, understood.
That's a big difference between what I'm seeing here...
Understood.
And what I'm seeing with the building.
Correct. And we didn't hear objections to that, and that's why I was going with this, because we did hear objections to this.
Objections to this.
Yes, sir.
Not to the fast food.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. All right. That's the question I have.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Supervisor Hess?
Yes, sir. The, at the public hearing, the decision was postponed so that you could meet with the adjoining property owners. Did you meet with them? No, sir, we did not. I tried to set it up with one of the other homeowners that is not here tonight, and Mr. Chapman wasn't able to coordinate it. And then I did a last-minute call to Mr. Carricker, and that's where his comment came from.
Did you make any efforts to contact other homeowners?
I didn't know any other homeowners, so I did not, no, sir. I knew, I'm a personal friend with Kevin Chapman.
Walk the streets and knock on doors?
No, sir, I did not.
Isn't there another hotel, like, right across 277?
Yes, there's two.
There's two?
Correct.
And he's proposing a third?
Yes, sir.
You know if there's a demand for that?
No, sir, I'm not the developer.
So we postponed so that you could talk to the neighbors, but you didn't?
We did not, no, sir.
And what you brought was what you think is a response to what you heard at the last public hearing?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And I'm not making any false assumptions about where we are or what we've done?
No, sir, you're not.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to keep dragging this on. I just got these pieces of information with the pictures of motels and office buildings. Is it possible to defer this one more time and give myself as the supervisor in this area to...
Well, I'll pine on your request and let Mr. Williams agree or disagree. I believe it's a bad practice. However, if you have new things before you this evening that you did not have before, I think it's an appropriate action to take, and we're well within the limits of what we need to stay within, which I think is a year, to make a final decision. So if you didn't say, "I got new information tonight," I think it's a bad practice, but it would be appropriate. Is that correct?
That would be correct, Mr. Chairman. It is, the time period's a year, and this application was filed in November, so the Board certainly has ample time to work with, and what it decides it wants to do, obviously, is the Board's prerogative.
So if you made that motion, I would say that the Board would vote on your desire to have time to look at additional information, which they may want to do also, but...
That would be my motion, if there's a second to it.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Till the next meeting.
Next meeting, is that a 30-day one?
Thirty days, let's make it 30 days.
We're getting to summer, and I get confused.
That's fine, 30 days.
Thirty days?
About 30 days.
Next meeting's probably sufficient for the motion, to our next meeting. Postpone till the next meeting?
That's two weeks.
No.
No, it's 30 days, that's right. Yes, that'd be fine.
27th.
27th.
The next meeting would not be a full 30.
Can we do state date specific then?
Yes, yes, you could. When is our meeting after that one?
There's May 27th and then June 10th.
June 10th?
Let's do June 10th, that gives us 30 days.
Motion is?
My motion would be that we defer till June 10th.
Okay, postpone till June 10th.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Our next item is a presentation of a master plan, 0215 Blackburn Commerce Center. Go ahead.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is a proposal to develop a little over 139 acres that is zoned RA rural areas and M1 light industrial district with industrial land uses on the M1 portion. The master plan consists of two parcels of land that are located adjacent to Apple Valley Road, Dawson Drive and Route 37. A parcel, ADI, is the property that was rezoned earlier in your meeting, and then the other piece, which is 58C, was rezoned back in 98 as part of the Coca-Cola Business Center. The location map for the property is on the screen to your left. As you can see, the Blackburn piece and the Coca-Cola piece are outlined in black. And this is the master plan for the property. It's very small up on the screen. It was also included in your agenda. Partial 58C, which is the Coca-Cola property, currently has an existing entrance on Apple Valley Road, which is that loop road that serves the other building. That will serve as access for that property as well as rezone parcel ADI. There's also a proposed connection with Dawson Drive shown on the master plan. There are no additional access points on Apple Valley Road, which is consistent with the rezoning. The master plan also shows a continuation of the landscaping along Apple Valley that was consistent with the Coca-Cola, as well as the green space areas that were included in the Blackburn rezoning around the pond and the 50-foot through the property. The plan also shows the interpretive pull-off for KBA. Now, with this master plan, the applicant is proposing to utilize private streets within the Blackburn Commerce Center. Therefore, they do need a waiver of 14424C of the subdivision ordinance to allow the subdivision of the lots on private streets. The Planning Commission reviewed the waiver at their May 6 meeting, and they did recommend approval. So tonight, while the master plan is presented as an informational item, we do need a action on the requested waiver. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and...
Back up one. Okay, when did you plan for this waiver to be handled?
The waiver would be handled at this meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay, because I didn't pick it up from the agenda or anything.
I'm sorry, it was at the bottom of the first page of the staff report.
Okay. All right. Questions on the master plan? All right, then you have a waiver request before you. Do you want to, is it, you summarize somewhere?
No, I'm sorry. The waiver request of the subdivision ordinance, 14424C, to allow the subdivision on private streets, as opposed to VDOT streets.
What's your pleasure on the waiver request?
Mr. Chairman, I think that it makes sense. And like, again, it takes away the ability to utilize the public roads in the area and basically makes them use the entrances that are existing there. So I would move to approve the waiver request of the applicant for the Blackburn Commerce Center to utilize private roads within the Blackburn development.
And we have a motion to approve the waiver request. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Supervisor De Haven. Discussion. Hearing, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The waiver request is... The waiver request is approved. Board liaison reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
If I may, I recently attended, let me get back here, at Lower Fairfax Community College, a public information meeting concerning the permit application of CineGrove to apply Bower solids on certain properties in Frederick County. I thought the presentation was an excellent presentation explaining the permitting process, the CineGrove's plan, and I learned that they also have adopted new rules and guidelines that actually not only cover the potential runoff and health hazards, but also the odor that might be coming from the application. And just to let the residents know that there will be a comment period on this, and that they can go to the website and find out when that comment period is. For those who did not make the meeting, you can go to DEQ's website, and you can find the information there that you would need to present any comments that you would like to make on this process.
It seems like it doesn't hit the radar screen till it goes on the ground, and then it does.
Yeah, but they're trying to get out of hit of it this time, not that they did a really good job in making the presentation.
Anybody else on board liaison reports? All right, then we'll move on to citizen comments. This is the portion of the meeting the board sets aside for citizens to speak to the board about any topic. Is there anyone? And if so, would you come forward, give your name, magistrate, district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen of the board, Sean Graber, Back Creek District, 456 Borough Road. Been a lot of public discussion about rezoning, but I haven't heard a lot of public discussion about a large expenditure that may come before the board this year, and that is the fourth high school. There's a lot of discussion in supposed design phases for this fourth high school, and a large expenditure of $91.9 million. I just wonder if this board has been in discussion with the school board at all regarding holding a public hearing on the fourth high school, and if there's been many public comments on it. And my concern lies, we're spending a lot of money on this high school. It's nearly $3,000 per household, and we currently have $15.1 million scheduled to service the school debt for the next upcoming year. I have to wonder if it may not be a good idea to look at possibly expanding one of the three existing schools by doing some renovations and taking care of our student load over the next 10 to 15 years. If you look at Clark County and what they spent on their most recent high school, which opened two and a half years ago, it was slightly over $27 million, and it held 840 students. Our proposed high school is going to hold 1,725, and it's going to cost $91 million. If you take the 840 and multiply it times two, it gets us to 1,680 students, which is very close to the 1,725 we proposed. But if you doubled their cost, it would only be a little over $54 million, not $91.9 million. I wonder if the board has been in discussion, as I said, with the school board, and I'd be interested to have a public hearing and have some public discussion on saving some money for the citizens of the county. I do not see how we can balance the budget in years coming forward without having a significant tax increase if we go forward with the fourth high school. Thank you.
Seeing no one, we will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any board supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one not related.
Supervisor Wells.
I'd like to take this time to thank Mr. James Stevens, who was on the Social Services Committee before Mrs. Rush will take over in June. He has served in that capacity, I believe, for eight years, two terms, and done an excellent job. He is passionate about it, and he took time to speak with me and speak and meet with Mrs. Rush, and he genuinely wants to find the right person for that and called me and told me that he felt that we had done that. But I want to thank him for his service to this county. He's done a great job.
He really has, and I have a great deal of respect for the gentleman, and if there's, I don't know, we usually write a thank you letter, but if there's a little something else we could do, he certainly deserves it.
I think that would be a great idea. Be happy to work with.
Staff have a recommendation?
Pardon?
We'll come up with.
Letter a little bit, or what?
We can look at that.
I'll get with you.
Okay.
We'll come up with some ideas. Great, thank you so much.
I'm sure if you express that opinion from all board members, if you run into them, it would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
I have two items. The first one has to deal with our chairman. I found that the other day. I wasn't at Shandau University's graduation, but Dr. Fitzsimmons, president of the university, presented the chairman with the president's, I think it's Medal of Honor for his outstanding service to his community, dedicated public service. I just think it's worthy, noteworthy of the institution's recognition of our chairman. The second issue I really wanted to share with the board tonight, it actually got triggered with the article in the newspaper about the $91 million for the fourth high school. And I've had some citizens talk to me about numbers and send me emails with numbers. Numbers at these early stages are really dangerous. You used to have to deal with them all the time because they're not defined. I think it was pretty interesting, in the newspaper article, it compared some Loudoun County schools, gave their cost, but guess what? It added significant dollars, $20 million on one for the cost of the land to go with it, which wasn't included in their numbers. The other things that really trouble you trying to understand numbers is what's in it? Architectural and engineering fees, furniture fixtures and equipments, consultant fees, internet connections, lab equipment. It just goes on and on. The initial $91 million, as I understand it, because I have met with some of the school administration and talked with several school board members, was a total project cost. Some of these numbers have to be established to be put on the CIP list. In my meetings with staff, I expressed personal opinion, I think we can do better than $91 We've talked about a number of issues, and I would report to you that they actually have talked with their architect. The architect has come back and simplified some of the design features. I even encouraged the architect to go a little bit further. One of my comments was, we don't have to market this building to draw anybody in. We're going to get the students, they're the captive audience. So, I think they're working with the architect to simplify the structure. It's a very qualified architect, the same one did Evendale School, and we went through some issues with that building and got things, you know, worked with, and they cooperated in simplifying it. So, I just would tell you that I've had some conversations with the school administration, and I think we're going to do better, but I don't dare give a guess because at this point, it's going to come down to, you know, when the process or the project goes out for bids. But the schools are trying to get the cost down, make it as efficient as they can, and I appreciate their listening to my comments. So, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board supervisors' comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess.
Last night, the board heard the presentations from the Service Learning Project from the high school students in the county, and I'd certainly like to applaud the students for their hard work, their interest in the activities of government, and also like to thank the county employees who assisted them with their projects. I think there have been a lot of great ideas come out of these service learning projects over the years, and I think this year was no exception. It just continues to amaze me how mature these students act in tackling some of the issues that they deal with, and I think it speaks well for the future of the county. The only other comment I wanted to make is, I did confirm with the advisor to the Service Learning Program that they felt they had to restrict the amount of time that each project presentation was given this year. You could sense that they were kind of rushed from the previous year, and I'd strongly encourage that the board consider next year, when we receive these presentations, that if necessary, we split it over two nights to allow a little more time. Mr. Tibbs, maybe you can confirm for me the time that they shortened. I think they hadn't allowed 10 to 12 minutes in past years, and this year it was seven to eight minutes or something. And so, if necessary, I'd like to ensure that we, I'd like to ask that in the future, we ensure sufficient time for, to hear the full presentations for these projects.
If I won't be here, might I suggest some discussion between the administration and the board that then is relayed to the service learning sponsors so that you can have that Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Secondary.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.